Light turn on.
Yeah, it's green. You have to hold the button down.
Good. Alright, welcome to City of Westerwakney's Planning and Zoning Commission. Meeting for November 6th. It is 7:00 PM. We will start it with a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the true republic of which is stands for my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm called being to order. It is 7:01. We'll start with attendance.
Who are we voting now?
Crystal Woodruff.
Chris Bonowitz.
Caleb Gilbert.
Cecilia Urban.
Teresa Sparks.
Robert Gilbert.
All is present. Moving on to item number four, public hearing. We have a motion to open a public hearing. Motion by Cecilia, second by Lee. On favor?
Alright.
We'll enter public hearing at 7:01. Item A is consideration and recommendation to the city council for adoption of the proposed new zoning ordinance, zoning map, and subdivision regulations. These regulations are being considered for the purpose of promoting the public health, safety, and general welfare, and to guide future land development within the city. They're up again.
I didn't know if y'all wanted me to speak now or if we just open it public and let me do it later.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, so we'll do it that way.
There's nobody here with the public, so I guess we will move on to close the public hearing. We have a motion.
I make motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Robert. On favor? We should be unanimous. We are now closing the public hearing at 7:02. Item number five, discussion and reaction to court. Well, that was that one, sorry. Uh, item number six, call to order regular session. We'll do that at 7:02. Item number seven, citizens input related to agenda items, three-minute time limits. Still have no citizens, so we will move on to item number eight. New business, item A, consideration and recommendation to the city council for adoption of the proposed new zoning ordinance, zoning map, and subdivision regulations. These regulations are being considered for the purpose of promoting the public health, safety, and general welfare, and to guide future land development within the city. Alright, sounds good.
Awesome.
Welcome back.
So hopefully this is the last time y'all have to see me, and then I will go to council after this, depending on y'all's recommendation this afternoon. I know Shannon sent out all the materials previously in regards to subdivision regulations, future land use map, and the zoning ordinance. So I open the floor to any comments, questions, concerns y'all might have. I will note there was one change on the zoning map that we made between the version y'all got sent and the version that we've done. And that is right here, you will see these two parcels, the marina and then the waterfront are marked single family. That is an error on the version of this map that y'all have not seen. That error has been corrected to be recreational to match the future land use map, which has it marked recreational for the marina purposes. I will note that. Um, and then the changes that y'all would have seen in the zoning ordinance would have been the ones that we discussed in regards to the overlay district, making that to only being allowed to properties that are flooding the highway frontage, not any properties that might be behind that highway frontage, making sure subdivisions are not being enforced with commercial properties. Um, and then secondarily, we added multiple districts into the articles in regards to antennas, the water crafts, storage, and things like that in the household ordinance, to make sure we're incorporating those things to match the city's needs. Any other concerns?
Want to start? Want to start? You said you had some comments.
Okay, so, um, if we start with the subdivision regulations on page fourteen, um, it's five dash twelve. It's talking about the large lot estate subdivision area, and it lists, um, as it's being in Johnson County.
Okay, second question.
That's an amazing catch. Yes.
So while we're at five twelve, I've, I've got one too. For item B, you have one acre minimum and one acre maximum. Do you read through that? It says for sewer, you have to be one acre minimum, and then also says without sewer, you have to be one acre maximum. Like, I just thought we were set at the same spot, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So five twelve B, you said that it says one acre minimum and a one acre maximum. We want that just to be one acre minimum, right?
So it should, yeah, so something like that. I can't actually pull up the exact text, but it was basically saying that to have city sewer, you have to have one acre to get city sewer. And then it also says you have to have one acre maximum to have a subject.
I'll read that over and get that fixed. So correction to item five twelve B.
So which is it though? Is it one, uh, one acre minimum?
Was it one acre minimum should be the, to get sewer, but we also have a one acre minimum. It's, this is one acre minimum to have city sewer also. It should be whatever our minimum lot sizes.
Right.
Yeah, the subject is one acre minimum, and then the city sewer should be. I'll get that corrected.
Page twenty-six is a ten dash one general, something, uh, under B, it says county clerk of Taylor County.
Why is there someone trying to make this? Okay. I apologize. Okay.
And just as a note on page thirty-one, it's where it starts talking about alleyways. And at the council meeting, um, there was some concerns brought up about alleyways, so throughout all of that, if that goes away, I guess you just take that out of there or you leave it in there.
We talked about that at the last meeting that we had, um, and from what Shannon was able to tell me, there was notice, the decision was tabled at the last council meeting in regard to alleyways. So what that means in regards to this ordinance is, right now, it's written in the way that council and P&amp;Z should be happy with, in which alleyways are not required, but then at the same time, if they were to be done by a developer, they have to meet these regulations and these things in there. And at any point, the city would decide to completely get rid of alleyways, or really anything that's in this ordinance, all that would be, would be a simple amendment process on the P&amp;Z and city council, um, that Shannon would go through, require a couple meetings, but it's just a simple work, um, update. And then also earlier on in the text, I believe, um, within the subdivision regulations, there is a part there that says any amendments that are made after this, or any ordinances that are passed after this that may be in conjunction to this, abide over what the original text says.
Thank you. She's two valleys in there, just so if someone wants them, we do have guidelines. Because I promise you, if we take it out, somebody's gonna call me and want it, and then I go.
Uh, that's true, that's true.
As long as y'all want to maintain them. I pay to maintain them.
Which, we could require a developer.
Well, yeah, I mean, so they want to make them private.
I'd lay off.
Okay, what's next?
Um, I went back to page fourteen on the five twelve. It's talking about large lots, and it gives all the footages and everything, side, you know, yards and all that stuff. Should that be included on the chart on page thirty-eight? Is this just the residential lots, and it's just for the smaller lots? I didn't know if we needed to include what the larger lots would have in it, or if it makes a difference. If you look at the chart on thirty-eight, it's where you really want to look.
Thirty-eight does not have. Oh, I was saying that thirty-eight. Are we meaning page thirty-nine?
Is that where the charts are, for the table? I mean, I don't know if it makes a difference or not, but since the larger lots are called out differently, I didn't know if it needed to be in that table or not.
We can put it in that table, just for clarity, because it's not necessarily something that has to be in that table. Of course, the text before that would mandate what needs to be in there, but that was probably something that, since you see an issue with it, would be something that would help all city staff and P&amp;Z members looking for, whenever they're looking for that kind of it.
And I didn't note it when it went on in other areas too, that it needed to be added in on those charts also. Anybody else have anything on subdivision regulations?
Yes. Yeah, anybody else have anything to add in subdivision regulations? So the one thing I saw is that, uh, we did not add the cul-de-sac maximum lot count. It's on page thirty.
Sorry, that one, that's just one I'm double checking because I, my brain squares, I put that in.
We talked about it.
I know we talked about it, and I, I remember marking it off my list of things as I was making edits. I was wanting to double check.
On the same page, uh, we stopped sixty-foot lightaways. Never got changed to fifty. Down, item three, H, H and then, or I and then three.
Oh, your pages are out. I don't know. Pages. Okay, wait, let's say that again.
Same thing I do. I printed it off.
I know you do.
Unless I'm zipping, it did something to it.
Well, the listed on the side numbers are different than the actual page numbers.
Oh, am I, what am I, which one am I looking at? This one says thirty of forty-nine.
I wonder if it's different than.
Okay, what section again? You said cul-de-sacs.
So it's, uh, section I, number three. Well, this is for the white lightaway.
I, number three. Residential right of where we have it, sixty feet. Lot two.
And then the cul-de-sac was previous page, item G.
And you said item G cul-de-sacs, and we need to add in.
There was just anything like mine the last week.
And then I never, I scanned through this. I couldn't find anywhere where we added, like, have two points of access for subdivisions. Did that not get added?
I think we were leaving that one up for council's decision before we changed it. I was supposed to say, that one was not one on my notes from last week. I remember the discussion, but I didn't, I didn't write that one down, because I believe there was a discussion on leaving that one. That one was one you wanted council to look at before we change. Access, because not all of our subdivisions
Right.
allow for it.
So obviously, the existing subdivisions would have to be grandfathered in, but we need to make sure that new subdivisions, just like they're trying to get the second point of access for Rabbit Cove. We don't want another situation like that. And then going back to regulations for, like, foundations, that basically NTC COG recommends basically sending it to the local regulations. So if we don't put anything in ours, then we're just stuck in the situation that we're in now.
Yeah.
Where builders can just come in, throw concrete on the ground, we know nothing. So we need to add something.
I want them to actually have
compaction tests. I was supposed to say, I thought we had compaction tests on the list of studies that had to be done by the engineer. Page.
Maybe I missed it.
No, I might be totally wrong as well. I just remember that conversation with Christie where she.
Well, I was going through like the, the regulations she put in, because I saw that she put in the COG and the text audit and all that stuff, but I did not see anything o- outside of that, and, yeah, COG does not have any standards, so, for that particular item.
We have soil conditions, but we do not have a compaction test on page nineteen. We can add compaction test there, or we can add it somewhere else. However, I would prefer that we have Christie give her input on how she would like to see that be worded. Okay, does anybody else have anything for for this?
And then, so we added a lot of items here for basically the submission process and how the city obviously has thirty days to act, which is state law, but the problem is, is it's impossible in our city to do that, because we only meet once a month, which means.
One hundred percent aware with that.
So, uh,
That can be one item I brought up today.
So we've got to figure out some way to regulate this, and I know some cities require, you, they're only allowed to submit one day a month by calendar, so they only accept submissions one day a month. And it's on a specific calendar where the city comes up with a schedule, and that's the way they can meet it. So.
I'm working on that, because it's all me.
But if, for example, if a developer comes in the day before, two days before, city council meeting submits something, then it's automatically approved, because there's no possible way without special sessions for it to get all the way through review and back to another city council within a thirty-day period. So I know it's state law, but all, every city on earth has figured out loopholes, and we need to make sure that those loopholes are in here to properly get it through the system.
Yes, and so this is one of those situations where that, me including that was not in trying to be sneaky or anything like that. That was me trying to ensure that y'all are up to state regulations, because I cannot in good interest have y'all adopt something that is not within state code. Now Shannon is actively working on that loophole process that Caleb is discussing, and once that is adopted, that would then supersede what is written in the code, what we have right now in the subdivision ordinances. We could also go the route of taking out some of that and say, see, ordinance, whatever that might end up being once it gets adopted. However, that's not necessarily part of the subdivision regulations. That is part of the city's own, the structure and adoption of these items. So that's one item that I made it to where it is up to the state standards. And then from here, it is up to y'all to make recommendations to council and/or for council to make a recommendation, and for Shannon to bring in ordinance to the table, um, to update that piece of code right there.
Which there's, um, we can include that in some other things we're doing. We're about to make it where they can only submit permits so many days. Because I have got to be able to split my time between both, and right now, that's very difficult. And so we're gonna split it two and a half days and two and a half days. We're trying to come up with a schedule so we can include it all in one day.
Right, but, well, a lot of cities, they only accept submissions like once every two weeks. Usually like from eight AM to noon. You have to submit within eight AM to noon on Tuesdays, every, every other week. And they usually sit there with you, go through all your paperwork, make sure you have every single piece of item, and if you're missing one item, they kick you out, and you don't get to submit. So I think we need to come up with a similar process, and that just protects the city, that protects everybody from automatic approvals.
I'm one hundred percent in agreement with Caleb. Especially since two of them are just county name fixes. That's really simple. Okay, on to the map next. Zoning map, does anybody have any comments on that, so I already said it, but then it's resolved.
Anybody else?
On to zoning document, any comments?
Anybody else want to, you want to start, like?
Okay. Alright, on page three, which is one point four zero, zero.
One point four zero zero, yeah.
Um, it talks about having a board of adjustments. Are we gonna have one of those, or do we have?
Act as your board of adjustments.
I saw that later on in the document.
Currently, our council acts as our board of adjustments.
Okay.
So the reason why it's in there is it's in there in case the city ever were to grow to a point at which they wanted a separate board of adjustments. We didn't want that to be something that y'all have to come up with the language, the text, all that for later on, and it would just automatically be written into y'all's zoning ordinance for y'all to adopt it that time.
Which we actually do have in our current zoning ordinance also. But as we know, it is very difficult to get members for boards, so our council is currently.
That makes it simple.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Maybe, maybe. Okay, on page nine, three point two zero zero. Um, on item two, it talks about having vice chairman for like P&amp;Z. So are we gonna start nominating that sort of thing?
Probably should. Well, wait, we do have a vice chair.
We do.
Are you vice chair still?
I think so.
Are you sure you are? Actually do have that.
Okay, check.
Okay, so far no edits, just questions.
Okay, um, let's see, on page fourteen, which is four point four zero zero. Sorry, what'd you, what were the numbers? Four point four zero zero on page fourteen. It says if a house is considered abandoned, and a new individual wants to take ownership, then it has to meet the new, um, ordinances? Okay, that's what I understood.
Can we stop there for a minute? So one of my things on the abandonment of the structure, because I think it said in there that it's considered abandoned if the water is disconnected for six months. So what happens if somebody is building a new house, or remodeling a house, and they have their water turned off? That's one thing we.
Well, if they're remodeling, they're bringing it up code.
Yeah.
Well, I just want to make sure that there's not some sort of nuance in there, is like, oh, I'm just gonna take over someone's house if they're remodeling, and their water's shut off for six months.
No, so they're, and, and that situation, if it was a remodel or something of that nature, that would have been already discussed with code enforcement.
I believe they, they have to have permit.
They would have to pull a permit, and at that point, if it's not abandoned, they're actively working on that property.
There ain't so much of a footage requirement or upgrading, because like in Dallas, when you, in a high-rise, if you remodel a third of the building, you have to take the rest of the building up to code.
Oh, wow.
And cities, a lot of cities are like that, where you, you remodel a certain percentage of the house or a building, you have to then therefore go in and bring it all up to code.
It's a great question, but that would be for your building code and standards discussions, not for a zoning ordinance discussion.
But something, so that would fall under our ordinances, like regular ordinances.
And what to me, I mean, if somebody doesn't have their water on, they're still maintaining the properties and keeping it up to date and everything. You can't call it abandoned. I mean, because I own a property in East Wark, and I don't have the water on, and I'll take care of it, and you'll take one and have it yard mowed and everything else, but I don't have the water on. So property I bought from my brother has moved out.
We not wanna look at the wording on that.
We can definitely look at the wording on that.
Because we do have a lot of light countses.
Right.
People winter off.
Yeah.
During the winter, because they don't. Not here.
You switch it to power.
Yeah, I have, I have, I have power on, but no water.
Power. We not look at the wording.
There's no reason to have the water on the freezer or whatever, you know, around, or somebody move in, in it when I'm paying attention.
Because we do allow them to winter off, and, I mean, they still have an active account. It's just they place it on hold.
Like a freeze.
I'll, I'll change it to electricity.
Yeah, I, I just said, uh, change it to power for six months, so I abandoned them. If everybody's in agreement with that.
On page, um, eighteen, five point one zero zero. I remember.
Five point one zero zero, sorry.
Uh, the number three, it's talking about the council having a vice chairman, and since we are.
Now, we should have a pro temp.
But do we? Because the pro temp is in?
Pro temp is acting as mayor right now.
Right.
We don't have a mayor, but we still have a pro temp.
But if he's not there, does it need to have a backup now?
Well, this month, we will be candidacy votes. Back as the election was today's go.
Yeah.
Let all of that.
So, but then, you said it says vice chairman?
But it, yeah, it should say pro temp.
I, I just wrote it as that.
Because that's gonna be what a, a whole probably. Maybe.
The other ten thousand names, you can, you can choose one in council.
Alright, next one.
Well, after that, there were several, um, sections that sounded like areas that probably aren't on our zoning map right now, but could be in the future, maybe. And so we just listed all that stuff just in case, but.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
If someone apply for it, we choose to let them rezone it to that. We have it covered.
Okay, that's what I was thinking it was. But then I saw, um, like on page eight and page twenty-four, but it's like seventeen point three zero zero and nineteen point four zero zero. It's talking about SF eight.
That needs to be resolved.
And I didn't click to see if there were any other ones there. That's just the two I noticed.
I will check that, get that resolved. That is the, that would be your old SF eight thousand, which y'all have were fixed to SF seven point five.
Yeah.
So I can get that fixed. Go ahead.
Who else? Uh, so, man, I'm not as good as Cecilia in getting page numbers. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So one thing I saw is the fence regulations. We stuck it at six feet. Uh, is that what?
What it currently is.
Some, most people are doing eight-foot fences now. I mean, I can see over six-foot fence.
We have, our regulation that we currently have in place is four foot on any street side that's a corner lot. Otherwise, it's five foot for your front. Six foot on the sides and back, but you can go eight, as long as you talk to our speakers. That is our current ordinance.
Well, you need to see through it. Privacy fence.
Well, I think the backyard should be privacy defended. The people should be allowed to privacy fences. Front yards, like, I get, you want them open. Fish, I mean.
And I don't want anybody to see into the backyard.
Well, Richardson.
Uh, yeah, we don't have a choice.
Was like that, and people would put lattice on that two foot.
We don't even specify that. I had one guy that was running a hole every so many feet with a, you know, like, uh, what is that bit? I can't think what it's called, but it's a big circle bit, or, and that's what he did.
The way the criminals who come in and look, seems you got your backyard. Makes it fair.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with going eight. We can get council to do eight on the side and back, as long as it's not a corner lot.
It already, yeah, corner lots and front yards are.
Why, why not corner lot?
Because you can't leave your, so somebody brings their fence all the way out on their property.
I know, so, yeah, I see that. So usually.
That's why they do four foot.
You're gonna have a twenty-foot setback from both sides.
I believe the way it's written in here is it's front yards are four feet, backyards are eight feet. It doesn't specify corner lots.
I don't think it did.
Typically, anywhere you are on a corner lot, you can't have, with the setback, like you said, with the setback at twenty feet, you can't have an eight-foot privacy fence. That would be in way of.
So, yeah, because usually what you do is, you still love to do the privacy fence, but there's, you usually have the, of a corner clip, basically, as you can see. So if
A mobile requires.
If you're on a curve or something like that, a corner lot, then obviously you have to pull your fence back so drivers can see. The visibility, and we have that in here. I read the visibility, the corners and all that.
We got that covered, so people don't.
There's a very long visibility section.
All the time, and everybody dents it out.
Right. Well, that's what her diagrams will fix, make sure those fences can't come out the way out, because I, I know what you're saying, but with our setbacks and, and the additional regulations, that should end that, by the way, because then.
Being ours, our current fence doesn't have a back. I can put it on property line. And that's probably why our specified has corner lot.
Yeah, you know, the fences, most fences are on property line, shared between the broadcasters.
Is everybody happy with changing fence regulations?
Yes.
Next item.
Alright, and then, uh, the corner lot setback. So we have the, we have an eighteen feet. Was there a, it's just an odd number. Well, I didn't know if there was a reason behind eighteen feet. Such an odd number.
That was the one that has been there.
Very strange. You have eight foot on one side, eighteen foot on the other. You have a thirty-four foot pad with our setbacks.
This is an item that has.
It was just an odd, odd number. I mean, I think most cities are fifteen feet for corner lots, right, or on side street.
I've seen cities choose whatever they wish to choose.
I think it's usually fifteen foot, and then it's usually goes to bigger, if you have driveway, it's garage, but I mean, I don't know. I don't know. It's just, I obviously want the bigger cities when you're next to a house, but when you're next to a street, I don't think it matters. I always see them with bigger cities, when you're next to a house, but when you're next to a street, I don't think it matters. I think we should round it to fifteen or twenty.
I think so.
Odd.
I'd say fifteen.
I think it should be thirteen feet.
Get someone out there with measuring tape. Okay, so fifteen feet, I heard a second, or more for fifteen feet. Okay, great, next one.
And then, so, we changed all of our widths, I noticed. So we went from eighty to sixty to, and that was, did y'all notice that? So now our minimum is sixty foot wide. So.
That was all in accordance with, y'all remember, we had the discussion of the land use tables last time, we brought them up, the math was not appropriately calculated. And so what we did, we went back in, we made it to where the math was accurate, and then we compared that to other cities to make sure that it was, you know, we weren't going forty and going absolutely terribly small, um, to make the math work. So that is also open to discussion if we want to recalculate those two different numbers, but yes, it did change the width down from an eighty to a sixty in some areas to allow the proper square footage calculations.
So, the way I see it is, so basically if we do a sixty foot wide lot, you have eight foot setback on the side, that's only forty four foot to build. Is that enough room to build? I don't know. It's not very big at all. But I mean, maybe a builder just won't build on it, they'll make bigger lots, I don't know, but just.
I wouldn't have gone down, I would have went up.
Oh, it's probably easier.
In my case, because you know where it's at, I have to know where it's.
I think originally it was like eighty by a hundred, right?
Yeah.
And then now it's sixty by one twenty or something. I would almost think it's middle ground, like seventy by one ten or whatever it comes up to be.
They're definitely going to shrink them down.
Because right now, all.
They keep them the same and make them a little bit.
I'm comparing it to our existing subdivisions, they're sixty foot now, there's not enough room to build a house on.
And have a yard.
It's shrink them down, but we keep them the same width. Because by the time you factor in a garage, a garage is twenty foot wide, and then you have a front door, and then you have no room to, you have dead space.
Yeah.
So like that, I said, beautiful, we're going up there, no yard was right.
Yeah, so it's sixteen for, for seven point five, it's sixty by one twenty, for, um, ten, it is seventy by one thirty. And then twelve is the eighty by one forty. So how would y'all like to see those changed?
I think it at least needs to be sixty five. So then that gives you a, that gives you a forty nine foot, and that's better. Then you put it in garage. Probably a little bit better, but.
Do you think we, um, totally need to change the smaller lot one, because the other one sound okay to you as far as?
Yes, the other ones are seventy, right, seventy and eighty?
Seventy, yeah.
Easily build a house on those, I think sixty is where we'll get to a problem. So maybe we do sixty five feet for the smaller lot. Or do you want to, or would you prefer seventy, for small?
What were you saying, with seventy by a hundred and ten?
Well, uh, I think that's, then goes to seventy seven hundred square feet, so we can do seventy by a hundred.
So seventy a hundred, is that what we're thinking? Seventy five, seventy width, hundred, that?
For minimums, yeah.
For minimum?
And then they still have to go to seventy five hundred total.
Yes.
So they can either go wider or longer from that point.
Which increases the other two then.
So, yeah, then, I mean, I guess we don't have to increase the other two, then maybe we should go deeper.
Yeah, the other two.
Go deeper instead of wider.
Yeah, the other one is seventy for your width, but then it's one thirty for your depth, so you're out in a thirty foot depth minimum. And then twelve, we're going eighty for your width and one forty for your depth.
But I mean, I think seventy is a pretty, it's a good width lot.
Yeah.
And allows you to have your garage, parking, street parking. Bits.
What's for me?
That was the, oh, uh, so we have the parkland dedication that you added. Uh, I think it says one acre per a hundred lots, but is that prorated, so if they do fifty lots, then is it prorated to half an acre, or how? Because I didn't see anything kind of wording that.
So.
The way I see it is, there's not many pieces of property in West Milwaukee that could quite fit a hundred lots, so if we don't prorate it some way, we're never gonna get part of that. Uh, sorry.
No, you're good.
It's dark near pain.
What would y'all like to see as the min, so that, the reason why it's written the way it is right now is that is due to the national standards for park and development for the country.
I would think it would be, yeah, if you have a hundred, you dedicate the land, but if you're under a hundred lots, maybe they just do the prorate fees, like you have listed in prorate fees. So, because I, I agree that once lots, the, the land is so small, you, there's just no room for a park anyways, so maybe they pay toward buying a parkland somewhere else. I just, I just don't see very many tracts of land here that could fit another hundred lots and then a park.
Not unless some of the bigger ones started any.
Right, which.
Would be enough.
Yeah, but. So maybe we come up with a parkland dedication or fee. One or the two, and maybe it's based on lot count. I don't know how to word that, though, that would.
Yeah.
Be up to you.
It's okay, we can definitely look into that issue. Typically, at that point, if I'm gonna be honest, the way a lot of our smaller cities have handled that is y'all already have a city park. And so at that point, if there was a development small enough, y'all wouldn't put that cost on the developer, because most likely the acreage that y'all already have in y'all's park would be able to handle those, for instance. Versus if y'all put in a fee like that, sometimes that can be negative towards the developer, and when you already have a park here that is a positive towards a developer coming, but then you're telling them they're not allowed to do that. But that's, that is just one situation that I can explain as to why it's not already included in the text, y'all, of course, can do whatever y'all want, and I've seen park dedication fees all across the state, so it's definitely something that is very normal.
Well, it's that a lot of cities have park dedication fees and park development fees, see it too, so some of them pay fees to develop a park. Yeah, that's.
I'm not in the camp. Well, but basically that.
That's what I was saying, it's like, it's a park development fee, basically.
And they just put it towards fixing up those existing.
Yeah, like some cities, like, I mean, actually, most cities that are, like, you per lot, like, some cities are five hundred dollars a lot, you pay, some cities are real high, like, first of all, they charge almost two thousand dollars a lot.
That would be interesting.
For fees. And those just go to the city's park department, they either improve a park or buy the land and build a new park and.
We gotta bring, 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 bring in on this park, there's a lot of the land back in there.
A hundred percent something that's been being looked at already, and that would actually, well, that's. Got it, okay.
So maybe we do it, maybe we do it as a, you're required to pay so many dollars per lot fees, and then, or you can donate land in lieu of those fees, if we were to something like that.
Yeah.
This is Chris, it seems to me that when I go into these new developments that are happening around Dallas, most of these places with nice housing, the developer puts one in. You have a little pool house and swing sets and all that stuff, so any good developer who wants to sell the property, I assume they're gonna put in a park area in the building.
So the, the difference.
The rim.
The difference with those and those are those are typically HOA only, so they're not open to public. Uh, you know, I mean, that's one, the negative side, but then, the HOA would require to pay the fees, maintain it. So, I mean, I guess it's good for that, that particular subdivision, and it's good for the city to have to maintain it, but it's closed off to the rest.
Okay, what's the next note?
I think that was it.
Really? Cecilia, you got any more? I know, I was expecting a lot more, I'm, I feel, I feel blessed over, I only got one page notes here, I'm surprised.
We fixed all the rest of this. Oh, sorry, there's one more. Uh, the, the lot coverage. So we, we discussed that, uh, I believe we have it, I think it's sixty five percent right now, so it was fifty five percent, now we moved it to sixty five percent.
Sorry.
But, again, it's based on, that should be based on engineering standard, or our engineering standards to.
I concur to Shannon, because when we were discussing that, there was reasons.
I was gonna say, it's fine as long as we, if we keep it, but we just didn't make sure that engineers are required to design for that sixty five percent.
I was about to say, if my understanding is correct, there was a discussion with Christie, and she saw no issue with how it was currently written.
I'm sure.
And so it was left as it was, because we took that comment into suggestion, it was in my notes, I had called Shannon the day before, I sent this over to her to check on some of my notes, that really we had left a lot of question marks, because we had left some to the city. Um, so, Public Works, sorry, we had left some comments to Public Works decision, and we had left some comments to the city engineers decision. And so during that phone call, that one was made, I remember Shannon saying, don't leave it as it is, and so that's why it is as it currently stands.
So if we were to use NTC COGS, ISWM, it, it'll work, but we did not actually specify that in our, you, we do say that we're gonna use, uh, the COGS, Public Works standards, like roads and stuff, but it does not specify the ISWM process. Which, if we use that, then we're covered, because that's a pretty good drainage manual.
So, uh.
So no engineering standard provided, that's your comment you're talking about, right? Okay, Christie's comment, reference NCT COGS until draft or adopt a design standard of design, so she's in. She's gonna leave that and then.
Yeah.
So then I would recommend.
How do you spell that acronym?
ISWM, I S W M. In the greatest stormwater management plan, I believe.
From?
It's COG.
NC COG?
Yes, so maybe that's in your statement where we say use COGS, Public Works, and ISWM documents. And then, well, we should be covered, because then, I believe they're using.
And I assume we add that to zoning and subregs, or just?
I think, yeah, we should add to the subdivision regs where we got it.
Where we have the rest.
And then we're covered.
I will add that to the subdivision regulations to handle that question.
And then, some of the stuff that we left, JD, we were looking at eight inch minimum sewer, he said absolutely. Water, he said leave at six, and he said he was okay with the SDR twenty six or the SDR thirty five, thirty five was cheaper, and he said he was good with the thirty five, which you already can collect. And he said five hundred foot for the.
I believe it's still eight inches or six inches, or did I?
The water should be six inch, sewer should be eight.
Okay, maybe I.
I can double check that, but I, that changed, should have, I feel there's a couple of changes, I, I remember making others from these on there, so.
But we are still requiring. A water study, right? So if a six inch can't handle.
Yes, absolutely.
Because I guarantee a six inch can't ha, handle a hundred, like subdivision, so.
Yeah, feasibility, so all those studies are in there, we're gonna add them to the passion.
Coming in has to have a water into a feasibility study now. Okay.
All right, now, now that really is it.
Okay, so if the house is preexisting and already has water and sewer, it's already accounted for, it does not have to have feasibility, but anything to do that does not have preexisting water and sewer.
Okay. Okay, anything else? So far, this isn't too terribly many, who knows who's fixed. My recommendation would be that these recommendations are fixed before we take it to council. Well, the only one that I have that we, that goes to council is the two points of entry.
Well, it's the council.
Yeah, I can have those fixed, I'm sure. So the only one that we have as a recommendation to council pending the edits that were discussed here in our in Shannon's minutes would be two points of entry to subdivisions. Everybody in the team up for that? Send me all up for adoption language, right? For recommendation.
Who wants to take it?
I, I worded it out there for it all. Contingent to the edits discussed in this meeting and council deciding on access entry for subdivisions.
I agree with that.
Do I need to write it?
You say.
I don't even know what she was saying. We need to, we need to teleprompt this.
She had a motion to, to recommend adoption.
I have an Arbor Day event.
I have some desk paper in there. We should be approved for it. I've done it a lot in my career.
I believe that.
So, can I put out one more thing? Whenever, whenever you print the final documents, be sure and check the spacing and lineups and all that stuff, because it was kind of wacky wacky and it was showing things that weren't placed correctly.
I think it's the way it was sent to us.
Okay.
Because, uh, it looked like that on, it looks like that on my phone, everything.
So mine was normal. Okay, I was about to say, but I printed mine out of the zip drive.
When I, when I went to, I sent it to myself and opened it on my work.
Yeah, okay, so I moved it into a regular and resented after two of you were like, hey, I can't open this.
Yeah.
That looks really bad if you open it on, on our iPad or.
Okay, okay. Forget that one.
It actually looked bad if I opened it on the computer in the web browser, but if I downloaded it and then opened it, worded it.
I always download it.
All right, who's making the motion?
Robert. Who wishes to make the motion?
No.
I'm just gonna leave it in the middle and let somebody take it.
I make the motion to recommend the adoption of the proposed subdivision regulation, zoning map and zoning ordinance contingent upon edits in the minutes and leaving decision on access points to subdivisions to city council.
I made a motion by Cecilia.
I second the motion.
Seconded by Teresa, all in favor. Motion carries on. All right, item number ten, discussion and reaction to approve or deny planning and zoning minutes for September fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Did I read that wrong, or?
No.
Okay, it is, okay, so it's October.
What did I put on there?
September. Oh, wait, we're not true.
I thought we had cor, corrections that needed to be made, no?
Oh, yeah.
I gotta put minutes on the top, I know that.
So, and then the last page, I think it's a copy from the previous meeting before that. Because it shows, she made the comments about the.
Yes.
Zoning meller, which we didn't discuss last time. And then we did not adjourn at nine o'clock the last time, it was like eight. I think this, the first page looks good, the second page looks like might have been the previous agenda minutes. I think we did, it's the first time, the second time, we're.
No, no, we were very late. My wife had already gone.
Yeah, no, I pulled it off, but I know.
It was, we were late last time.
I'll double check it.
I think you tried.
Okay.
And what was the other one, other than the time?
I think the systems input, I don't think we have systems input. I think the citizens input, I don't think we have citizens input last time, did we?
For non-agenda?
Yeah.
No, we didn't. Cecilia asked about the cars.
I, I remember she asking about that at the previous meetings.
Was it in the first meeting? No, I thought it was that meeting.
Do you remember asking about it? Okay, so.
I specifically put that in there because I thought she asked about it. When I read it, I said, "Oh, she asked about it again."
I guess she wasn't here.
Okay, I'll take that out. I really thought it was last meeting.
All right, so do we not have a motion on that one, then? Will we wait till next time, or?
Is it, you can approve based on changes, or you can wait?
Yeah, we can just say approve based on removing citizen input.
Yeah, well, improve it based on removing the citizen input.
Motion by Robert.
Second.
Seconded by Crystal. On paper. Motion carries unanimous. Item number 11, citizens input, let's adjourn on items. No citizens, unless anybody up here has anything to say?
Well, I will make.
They did that in the council meeting, now too, they got.
But I'm the only one in the audience, so. Okay, so, this was brought up at the council meetings, I just wanted to make sure, make that we know about it too, because I'm sure it'll have to come through us, I would think. They were talking about making a road to get over, another road to access Rabbit Cove. So it'd be like cutting through properties and stuff like that, would that go through us?
I believe it would, but I'm not 100% on that, and they would have to come up with the property first, that he does not own any other brand. But that is a long way.
Yeah, they'll have to get, and, and, and was no making or something?
Yeah.
They had to buy the land.
But is that texted?
For extent, no, no, it would be a single road.
Oh.
The problem is, Rabbit Cove, when you go down Main Lane and you make a left, there is no way out unless you turn around and come back out from the road, but if there was a fat tire, there was a significant flooding event, tornadoes and trees all over the roads, they have no other entrance exit. So, um, that's what they're looking at, but again, that is a long way down the road, because there's nothing budgeted for it, and we don't own any property that could connect to it. So, there's a whole lot that we're going to probably afford, that we're even, and probably
Just put it in our heads, that's all.
But if you have anything, you know, you have to.
Zip one.
I don't think those are going to support cars.
It's a really long, a really long bridge.
Or raise the whole load.
I just said a really long bridge, like.
Like a bridge. Well, and so potentially, bringing it from this highway to Rabbit Cove Road, anywhere near the end, you would have to have a bridge, because you have that cove, and then you have swamp. So no matter what, you potentially.
Not cheap.
And again, not budgeted.
Yeah.
But you gotta start somewhere.
All right, any other citizens input? All right, we'll move on to item number 12, we have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Crystal.
I second.
Seconded by Lee, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous, we are now adjourned at 7:54. Thank you.
Good job.
Sorry, Crystal, I'm blanked out.